Good evening. It is now time for the regular meeting of the Houghton Board of Education to come to order. Roll call of the board. Mr. Gurman.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Dr. Lowe is on vacation.
Here.
Mrs. Malley.
Here.
Mrs. Mangano, I believe, is under the weather but trying to make it. Mr. Bon Giovanni, as you heard.
Trying to make it.
Mrs. Okerson.
Present.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Present.
A quorum is present. Shall we rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement by the President has read by the Secretary. Adequate notices of this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the Secretary on August 14th, 2019. There are no recognitions this evening. The board is in need of an executive session. The items this evening will be the HIB report, two personnel matters, one concerning discipline of a custodian, another concerning a dispute over compensation for a weather day, with a motion and a second. The board will go into executive session. The board is in executive session. Now, time to be back in session. Shall we take the minutes? Sir, a mover and second?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Thor. May I take that around, sir?
Please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Mr. Gurman.
Mr. Sasek, does that include the executive session minutes of the 10th, or...
Yes.
Yeah, I'll abstain on those.
Abstain on exec. Yes, on the other?
Yes, on the others.
Thank you. Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Yes, abstain on the exec.
Minutes are approved. Seven votes in favor and none opposed, with the abstentions noted for the record. Correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. President of the board, Mr. Bon Giovanni, your comments, sir.
We've tonight...I have had the opportunity a number of times during the summer to be up at the administration building, and I realize that it's summer for a lot of people. It's never really summer for your staff, and we appreciate that. And it's just been amazing watching the hard work that has continued to happen during the summer in terms of preparing for the upcoming year. So, the students are going to be in great shape, and the staff too. So, thank you for that. I have mentioned a couple of times that I was going to attend a training session, which I did two weeks ago, for Ian Hockley's program that he put together, Dylan's Wingman for Change. Ian will be the keynote speaker at school boards conference in October on the Wednesday. And I know that a couple of the board members here have had the opportunity already to sit with Mr. Hockley, and he's an amazing guy. It's an amazing program. I would really recommend to anybody who's going to be there that Wednesday to go to the keynote session. It will really be, really eye-opening. It's one of the best sessions I've ever attended. In fact, I've already signed up to do some training for them in Mettuchen at a middle school coming up, and will probably continue to do some other work with them. And on that, I will also mention that New Jersey School Boards on September 24th, it's a weekday, they have a program, it's a free program, establishing the social and emotional learning climate. It's at their offices, 413 West State Street in Trenton. I believe it's from like 10:00 to 3:00. It is a free program. Clearly, this is a hot topic ongoing throughout the state, especially in light of the fact that, is it now two weeks ago that the governor signed paperwork that every district will have some type of SEO training in their health programs from K to 12, right? Bruce, am I misstating it?
It still ties in the same type of thing. So, I've already signed up for this training on the 24th, and again, if you're available on a weekday, it looks like it's going to be interesting, establishing the social and emotional learning climate. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. It's time for the superintendent's report. Superintendent of School, Mr. Isoli, your report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have two brief presentations. The first one will be by Mrs. Moore. We're very appreciative of our staff being with us this evening, and Ms. Moore will be presenting to you the information on the state assessments that our English language learners take. It is known as the Access 2 test, and at this time, I'll turn it right over to Jackie so that we can get to this brief report. And this was also done at education, so I'm sure from the minutes of education, there'll be a brief mention, but this was the presentation there.
Melissa, is that picking up on the mic? Thank you.
Is this better?
To those hundreds at home who were watching this.
Absolutely. So, Access for Ls 2.0 is the assessment that is given annually in the state for ESL students. Those are students whose English is a second language for them. So, this year and last year were the first two years that all students in the state had to take the Access for Ls. Prior to that, only districts that accepted Title III funding had to administer that test to their students, but it is now statewide for all ESL students. And just to give you some background, this slide represents the diversity of languages that we have in the district. So, many times when we talk about ESL, the picture that we have in our mind is of a student who speaks Spanish from a variety of native countries. However, we have presently 18 different languages represented, and this is as of the access test of last spring. But since I've been supervising the program, we've had over 50 languages represented throughout those times. The number-one language presently is Spanish, but if you look at the top six that are up there, Spanish, Russian, Arabic, Ukrainian, Chinese, Vietnamese, we do have a number of students that speak those languages. So, we do have a great deal of diversity in the district. The Access for Ls produces results that reflects the English language proficiency of the student. So, the scale that is used is on a scale of 1 to 6. So, 1 would be the lowest level of English proficiency. As you can imagine, would be someone who does not know how to speak the language. And a 6 would be equivalent to that of a native English speaker, someone who is highly proficient in the language. Not every person who is a native English speaker even reaches the level 6. There are high expectations with that. So, we, when students come into the district and they register as part of the process, they take a home language survey, we've been using the state-required survey for two years now, and just this June, they require that survey of all districts. We've already been using it. We have a formal screening process that follows upon that to make sure that we're identifying the correct children. And then, we go through a multiple measures process where we look at an academic performance portfolio or academic background. It's not always a formal education, as well as prior assessment results and any kind of screening assessment that we can do on their English language. Similar process takes place when students exit. We go through a multiple measures review of their classroom performance. We look at their Access for Ls 2.0 scores, as well as a WITA model, which is another tool produced by the same company that can be used throughout the year. And we also consider teacher recommendations, every teacher that is involved in the instruction of those students. So, what does this have to do with these score results? Well, the relevance has to do with the area that has a 4 there. You'll notice that it's in red, it's very large. The reason is that when a child achieves English proficiency at a level of 4.5, we start to consider them to exit the program and return to a traditional classroom where they're not getting the support of an ESL teacher. So, when a child receives ESL, they're not sitting in an ESL classroom all day, throughout the day. They're receiving that as part of their program. But when a child exits ESL, they are released to where the ESL teacher is no longer pulling them for additional support during the day. We start to evaluate that at about a 4.5, and you can see that the top proficiency level is a 6. So, by the time we have students reaching a 6, often, they're out of the program, and they've since exited sometime previously. Some things that are important to know about our English language program is that we've made a significant commitment. We have three magnet schools in the district, Adelphia, which is our K-2 ESL magnet school, Ardina, and Middle School North. In those schools, we've trained 100% of our staff in sheltered English instructional practices. There are methodologies and techniques that can be used, not only with ESL students, but quite honestly, with every single student in the classroom, and they benefit every child. We've made a huge investment in making sure that the teachers in the magnet schools are equipped to provide the support that English language students need. Also, we have paraprofessionals that provide support in the content area classrooms where there's not an ESL teacher present. And we've had a number of ESL parent workshop meetings where we're actually inviting parents and families out to do activities together as a family, to have language experiences as a family, and learn more about how they can continue to support their child. And we encourage them, even when a parent is not as proficient in English as sometimes they would like to be, to not let that stop them from supporting their child. The support they provide in the native language actually is going to help the child academically to acquire English, believe it or not, but the research does support that. So, right now, when we look at our results, you'll see the rate of 4.4 expanding is at 23.8, so that's 23.8% of our students. When you get to the higher levels, 5 and 6, it falls off. Why is that? You'll recall a few slides ago, I had shared that at a 4.5, we start to consider exiting students. So, it's not that students are never reaching those levels, it's that by the time they are, they're typically long out of the program. But basically, this is a show of the spread of the English language levels of our students, and we do find that our students tend to progress very quickly. If they enter as a newcomer, they're not a newcomer for very long, and we've seen wonderful progress. So, a Level 1 again would be a beginning level. A Level 3 would be a student who is pulled out not as frequently as a Level 1 for an ESL teacher. And, you know, they may sound like they're fluent in English when you speak to them because their expressive language is very good. But if you were to sit down and do some reading and writing with them, you would start to see that they need some additional support. So, we're providing that in the ESL program for them. So, some questions of the data, when you look at the spread of the data, it doesn't tell you a whole lot until you start digging deeper. So, some questions that we have that we look at as a department, and we can share more information with you about this in the fall, is what would be the starting proficiency levels of the students that we're talking about here, and what growth did they make over that time in the program? Are they exiting at the rate that we would want them to exit the program? Are they progressing at the rate we would want? And you'll see the chart up here. Are there language levels that differ among domains? So, Access for Ls breaks down more than just to one language proficiency level. It looks at four different domains of language, and then, within those four different domains, it cross-analyzes it and talks about oral fluency, expressive language, literacy comprehension, but specifically looks at listening, speaking, reading, and writing in very, in very close, almost magnified ways, and then breaks those down. So, is reading and writing progressing at a different rate than listening and speaking? Typically, you know, you do see a difference in expressive language, which would be speaking or writing, from receptive language, which would be reading and listening. Some other things that we look at are the academic foundation that a child has in their native language, because research does show that when a child has had a very strong academic foundation, they can then help transfer that knowledge into English, even though they may not have had the original instruction in English. There are some times when students have had an interrupted formal education, so if they don't have the core ideas, concepts, in their native language, it's very difficult to crosswalk and transfer that knowledge, and you have to spend a lot of time rebuilding that foundation. So, we look at all of these things in depth on a per-student basis as we plan what each individual child needs. It's a very individualized program, and really needs to be, because the needs are very unique for each child that enters the program. So, I'm hoping that this gave you an overview of Access for Ls and what some of those results look like. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious, how is a child ID that they need this? Does the parent ask for it when they're registering, or is it something that teachers notice pretty quickly when they're in the classroom in Janette, or...
So, when parents register in the district, there's a home language survey that we're required to do, and in filling that out, the survey goes through several things, such as what was the language the child first learned to speak, the language of the caretakers, what percent are they hearing that language at home if it's not English? It's pretty extensive, and there's three stages to that survey. The parent provides responses to the first several questions. Then, there is a contact made from an ESL teacher who goes more in-depth about each of those things, and then, they determine if they need to do a screening.
This is the second time I've heard this presentation. I heard it the other day at education, and it struck me again as I'm watching it that I really think that this is a very good example of the type of work that goes on in this district that, let's be honest, this is compliance issue, and it would have been easy to say, here's the 23, here's the 80%, here's the blah-blah-blah. But when you get to that next slide and you start looking at the questions in terms of how do these questions help an individual child, I think it's a good example of what happens frequently in this district in terms of not just saying, here's the minimum, here's the numbers, fine, take this state, go away. It's a matter of saying, how do I help this particular child? So, it's a great presentation. I'm glad I saw it a second time, and again, it's just complimenting your whole staff on the type of work that we see.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Ms. Moore, for that informative and wonderful presentation on our Access 2.0 for our ELLs. And at this time, our Director for Pupil Services, Ms. Fernandez, will share a similar type of report for our Dynamic Learning Maps, our DLM. This is the state assessment that we utilize when assessing some of our most needy students in the state. So, Ms. Fernandez will walk us through that. As they get that organized, as Mr. Preston and I were chatting here while the presentation was happening, we couldn't help but notice that this is a direct, these presentations are in direct alignment with your newly adopted board goal of governance and filtering through the data and through that. So, I think it's an important, you know, note to make both to our board and to our dais, as well as our community, whether they be here or live streaming or reviewing it later, that, you know, the board's obligation and its drive and its focus is really very aligned with their goals, and tonight's a perfect example of that. And I think we want to make, or take opportunities to make sure we're focusing ourselves on both our district goals, which we'll talk about in a minute, and our board goals throughout the school year. So, as we meet from time to time, we'll point those things out. I think it's healthy for our work, and it talks to our continued efforts to make sure we're on task. With that, Ms. Fernandez, the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. So, I'm going to give you a little background about the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps, which is an assessment, an alternative assessment that we give, and I'm not working the clicker well.
That's the first test.
She tried to steal it from me. No, it's not working. All right, now I feel better that it's not me.
We need our Director of Innovation.
It's on there. Or I can just go old-fashioned, keyboard. Okay. Maybe not. We're frozen.
Send in Marines.
Okay, so, back on track. So, the DLM, or the Dynamic Learning Maps, is an alternative assessment for our students with the most significant cognitive delays. There is a criteria that is used to evaluate whether a student may or may not be eligible to take the DLM as opposed to the state assessment that all other students take. Part of that criteria is that, in fact, there is a significant cognitive impairment for those students, and then, other measures are in place as well to make a determination of whether or not a student might be eligible to sit for the DLM as opposed to the NJSLA. Our child study teams are involved with the process with the parents at an annual review meeting once students are of third grade and above, and then, they make the determination of which assessment that student should take. Oh, now I'm going too far. So, what this assessment is linked to are the essential elements. The essential elements are something that really kind of extracts the core or essence out of a standard so that teachers know what that core content is to be addressed. So, those students with the most significant delays are able to really access the standards in some way, and the teachers have direction and focus as to how they are meeting those students' needs, but on their level, and what the core or essence of that standard is and where they are approaching with students. In terms of how this assessment is scored, there are several achievement levels that they look for with students. First, the emerging level, which is when the student has an understanding of the ability to apply content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements. And again, everything is taken right back to those essential elements again. Sometimes, students are considered as approaching the target. Where we like to see students is either meeting the target or advanced. Once we see students are either at target or advanced in terms of the target, then we have to start making decisions or not, whether or not they should remain sitting for the DLM, or whether they should then be moving on to the NJSLA. We sometimes have students that do progress and are able to then sit for the regular state assessment, but at times, we have students that the DLM will be the alternative assessment that they will always remain taking, because their functional skills are at such a point, and their cognitive delays are so great that they are not able to progress. So, we're not always looking for students to progress through these levels. We're really looking at the individual, unique child and determine whether or not their skills and abilities are what we expect them to be for what their potential or their ability level may or may not be. So, in terms of our scores, as you can see in the columns that are there, there are very few, when you look at the third column, when it is describing the number of students tested, this is how few students in district that we actually have taking this assessment in grades 3 through 8. So, when you move through the columns and the score reports on this, percentages can be very skewed based on the small pool of students that this is actually counting. So, one student can greatly change the percentage that you see. Our largest group was in our sixth grade. We had 12 students sit for this assessment. So, it really is information that we have to look at for the individual child and not necessarily as groups. It's very hard to really make a determination of trends when you're talking about such a small pool of students. So, again, like Mrs. Moore explained, what we do is we really generate questions about what does this information mean for us. For many students, unfortunately, because of their circumstances and their cognitive delays and their ability level, sitting for an assessment like this is not so functionally relevant, and we understand that, and we use the information to the best that we can. In some aspects, it is minimal information on some students. We also have very many students where it does draw a good picture of who that child is and does allow us to make good decisions about what their uniqueness is, where their skills lie, and what types of goals we may be able to target for them based on this. Again, like any other point of data, it is one point of data, and we try to look at multiple measures as opposed to just this one piece of data to make decisions. But we do try to look at what does this mean for individual students? Is it data that we can rely on? Does it draw a complete picture for this student? Or is it something that maybe may not be representative of what we know about that child also? If there are trends, are there trends that we can identify over time? And sometimes, there are. Again, like I said, it is with a small grouping of students, it's hard to really identify trends, but we do try to look for what they may or may not be. We do like to keep an eye on how we're comparing in terms of the state, but again, with a small pool, one student can vary that percentage very, very much so. Our teachers do like to look at this information. Again, like I said, they want to make a determination of whether they feel that the data is sound, and it is something that represents who that child is, and if so, if they can validate that data, then how can they use that to help that student in the classroom and make instructional decisions for that child? So, we also need to make decisions on how we can best utilize the information for each student. Sometimes, we do need to say to ourselves, this is not data that we want to use for this particular child, and dismiss it if we don't feel that it is authentic for that particular student. So, one of the things that we have done is we, the Special Education Department has partnered with the Language Arts Department to really work with our teachers to best utilize, not so much even the assessment data, but how we can best use the essential elements to help teachers write good goals for students. So, we developed some templates for goal writing where we correlated the New Jersey Student Learning Standards specifically with each essential element, and created a working template for teachers to kind of go through goals and really take a look at how they could make good decisions and make sure that each of their students were accessing the standards. So, by doing this, what it has allowed our teachers to do was not look at the standard as such a lofty, far-reaching goal for their students. It extracted that essential element for the teachers so that they had an understanding that, yes, I am working towards these grade-level standards for students that have significant disabilities. So, this has been one piece of work that we have done to correlate the work that we've done with the DLM and the essential elements to try to help our teachers really get a good command on the standards for some of our significantly disabled students. Then, moving forward, what we look to do and continue to do a better job of within the department is to ensure that all of our IEPs are specifically aligned to the NJSLS. This will also help us with better progress monitoring of students over time by using some of this data, and always by correlating those essential elements to the NJSLS and writing good goals for IEPs will always lead to better personalized learning. So, thank you, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. you. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, thank you very much.
Same comments as before.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Appreciate that. So, so we want to thank again Ms. Moore, Ms. Fernandez for coming out tonight. Well, Ms. Fernandez, you don't have much of a choice, but we certainly want to recognize that you are here presenting tonight. So thank you for that. I'm going to continue on with my report at this time. And the next item on my report is district goals. Much like we did at the board retreat with the board goals, we, we went through those board goals as a team and the board had elected at that time to continue those goals, that they were still pertinent and aligned with the work. Our senior administration team has grappled with the current goals back and forth over a couple of different meetings. And what we determined is like the board, when we really looked at our goals, we said these goals are really still ongoing, although we've made, we've accomplished a lot of things within those goals, they're still broad, fine goals. And one of the things we talked about was not reinventing goals every year and changing focus and direction, but rather to continue moving forward in the direction that I think this board has given us the direction to do so. So we are suggesting tonight, and it's on the agenda for your approval, that for the upcoming school year, we keep the same goals in place and we continue to advance that work as it's very much aligned with our strategic plan. We did a crosswalk with that. So we, we think it's most appropriate that we continue forward with the goals that are in place and, you know, move those into the current school year. Are there any questions about the goals? Or you have them at your tables, I believe. And they're posted on our agenda each and every meeting. So I'm sure you're all familiar with them as we've had worked with them throughout the last school year. And again, they are very much so in line with the strategic plan. The one thing we talked about changing was we have student achievement. We could, could have called that learner success, but I didn't want to go through the whole process. We understand that what we're talking about there. So we just felt that it would be most appropriate to, to move forward with that. But that would be the only semantical change that I think, you know, would, you know, could be something that we do. Any questions about that? Seeing none. The next part, portion of my update speaks to what's new in Howell. Well, not, not exactly what's new in Howell, but each year, I'm we, you know, the county office asks for new happenings and, and what the focus is going to be for the upcoming year. And again, like our goals, our focuses have been, we don't reinvent them. We, we try to have sustained progress in important areas. But in doing that, we take next steps. So Mr. Preston will highlight some of the information that we shared with the Executive County Superintendent, as well as Mr. Sanisak. We'll talk broadly about some of the facilities work that's happening. And I think most, most of that will be part of the operations update. But I think it's important, not only for the board who knows the work so well, but for us to take this moment, opportunity to share out with our community as well as on what some of the focuses will be. So, Mr. Preston.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. I think, starting from the largest and then working our way down into some of the more granular points, we launched the strategic plan this September that will, will be sort of up and running in the next few days. Within that, certainly continuing the learner success work that surrounds personalized learning. Some of those examples start to look like the district's work on response to intervention and remediating, providing intervention for students who are most, who have significant needs, or really a range of needs. But what we're looking to do now in terms of expansion of that work is also include enrichment needs within our RTI framework. We'll be implementing the financial literacy standards in the middle school curriculum. It's embedded in there. That's a part of the Education Committee briefs tonight and the part of the curriculum approvals that are being shared and up for approval tonight. The district will be launching the social, emotional, learning, and wellness goal as part of its district-wide work. So the district-wide committee will be meeting soon with a potential follow-up of sabbatical work on the same topic. We will be very early in the fall launching our community outreach and clarification regarding standards-based learning and standards-based grading. Some years back, the district moved to, almost 10 years, I think, at this point, standards-based grading. But it continues to be a point of confusion for many people, especially if they're new to the district. So we have some work planned and, and strategies planned to help better inform and create more clarity around that work. Through the community engagement and learner success, again, goal areas, we'll be working with the community. We'll be inviting members of the community to take part in, to take part in, in sharing problems of practice from their different areas, their different professional areas as parents, as community members. Sharing those problems of practice that they'll see occurring over the next 10 years with us so that we can create high-interest, career-threaded research pathways for our, some of our students to engage in by solving some of those problems that they'll see out there. Again, that ties right into the authentic, authentic learning threads that we have throughout the strategic plan and the community engagement. Let them be our problems of practice relevant to our community and create partnerships between the community members and the students in terms of some of that work. And again, as I sort of opened up, all of that work really moves us closer and closer to the personalized learning framework, to the ideals of the personalized learning framework by creating more pathways, more learner-led pathways to those unique and authentic outcomes. I think some of the other updates and, and things that are new have more to do with the facilities. So I'll, if it's okay with you, sir, I'll pass the mic.
Yeah, right over me, Sanisak. Absolutely. Thank you. So as every year, our buildings are progressing very well, getting ready for the return of the children. But this year, there's some new things made possible, again, I think we've said it in, in prior years, made possible again by the foresight of this board and some previous boards to do a long-term planning. The maintenance of our buildings are at a level that is, is better than I think it has been. It continues to get better every year and it's at a high level. Our B&amp;G Department has been working hard, working around all the contractors. The most exciting part, and you'll hear more about it in the operations report tonight, is that the ESIP plan is going very well. Our solar panels are producing electricity. That electricity, as you know, is creating the ability to add air conditioning and, and to most of the buildings. The hallways are not getting air, but all the classrooms will have air conditioning. We're working very hard on that. Those of you who have followed it closely, and I think there's a small handful of people that have followed it that closely, know that the original plan was to do some of the district this year in the summer and have some come online for the following spring. I'm glad to say that through a lot of hard work of the contractors and B&amp;G, it is very likely that all the classrooms will be air-conditioned when the students walk back in on the fourth. They may be turned in on the third, or the fifth, rather, I'm sorry, fifth, right? I keep getting that wrong. So there may be some cosmetic things on the outside of the buildings not done, but the units will be functioning. Very proud to say through the, the leadership of, of operations and finance, we've really, I think, maximized the impact of that. The additional things, the maintenance, we, we, all our roofs are in good shape. We paved to three new parking lots. You saw in the tweet, I was going to point to the tweet deck, but we've already taken it down. Our dean is proud of their newly painted four-square and everything on the new parking lot. So we're, we're really proud to say that the entire team, and it is a team, you know, the custodians, the bus drivers, and food service, everybody is part of that learner success that Mr. Preston talks about because we make it so that it's a warm, happy, healthy place. Unfortunately, one, one thing that we're working on, the storm that we had created a delay in the construction, almost cost us the schedule, and it also created a situation here at North that you've been apprised of. And that was, this building was out of electricity for about a week. And, and we are cleaning up the, the remnants of a little bit of growth from that because the hot, humid air did create it. So, but all in all, we are going to be ready. Mr. Harvey's pretending not to listen over there, but the, the B&amp;G team once again is, is coming through. And you see how this building looks right now. And that's the way all the buildings will look.
Great. Thank you so much. So a lot of exciting advancements are, are on the horizon, and we're very excited to get this year kicked off. And to Mr. Bonjovani's point earlier, like there is no summer, you know, there's a reason why we have 12-month employees. And there's a reason why I continue to say I'm the proudest superintendent, and that's to sit at this day as with, with such a, you know, proactive and, and caring Board of Education. But it's really the wonderful individuals that you see here tonight and throughout our buildings and in our offices throughout the summer that are really unwavering in their commitment to be ready. You know, we have, you know, construction going on in the district. We've shut down air conditioners to replace chillers and move them. And, you know, the cooperation and coordination, I think, really is unparalleled. And I'm so fortunate to, you know, be the superintendent in, in a mindset of servant leadership to serve these individuals and this community in a way to continue to advance the work. So I also wanted to thank the entire staff that's been working throughout the summer and taking time off to, to, to be with family and friends. That's important stuff, too. So I thought it would be appropriate to thank them as this is our last summer meeting. Yesterday, we launched our new staff academy. We used to have a staff orientation. We've now, for the third year, have rebranded that as a staff academy, new staff academy. And that, that's meaningful. It's not just, you know, semantical. So our new staff academy, we create cohorts of employees that go through a three-year process. In fact, our first cohort that we did this with three years ago are now, I guess, seniors. This will be their last year as part of the program where they continue to be part of sharing and learning that's ongoing beyond the regular professional development, the professional learning that exists throughout our school year. And it's really been powerful. I, I think the, the exchanges that we see between our cohort three, cohort two, and now our newest cohort onboarding now has really been a game changer for that process. But it was certainly wonderful to stand before our new staff yesterday and welcome them to the district. I certainly want to thank the board members that were able to be present. I know all nine board members, I'm sure, would have been there if their schedules are permitted, but certainly it is, and I, and I, I don't know this for fact, but I'm telling you, each year, we have four, we have five, we have six, we have four. The, the support that the board shows there is very meaningful. And I think it sends a really good message to our staff that we are all a community of learners and a partnered focus on student success and learner success. So thank you for, for always being present, but certainly spending a few moments with our new staff and our, and our team yesterday as they were introduced to our district formally. Today, they had a great day of learning. I know that it was a wonderful day. Ms. Moore reports that there was really good stuff happening. And, you know, they'll be back at it tomorrow. So we're really impressed with this, with this group of young staff members that were onboarding in terms of their experience. And we're excited that they're going to, you know, really strengthen the family's roots. So we're, we're excited for that. I have ESIP update, but you just heard that from Mr. Sanisak. So I'm going to skip over to my final announcement of, of my report. Today, we learned some incredible news and something that we should all take great pride in. And I'm sure out of our operation point, report, there'll be an update on this as well. And in, in no effort to steal Ms. Malley's thunder here this evening, but it is with great pride that I report to our community that all 12 of our schools achieved bronze level in sustainable New Jersey schools. So we are really excited about that. It was a, an effort that the entire school, community, individual schools, as well as the district, put forth. And, you know, in October, when I had the opportunity to speak to staff, we mentioned that Memorial had achieved that level. And I think Ms. Malley had threatened me prior to walking on stage that, you better get the other 11 on board, Isola. And, you know, Ron then whispered, she's not kidding. So I, I think on stage, I threw the, threw the challenge out. And I know one thing, just challenge our leadership and our, and our teaching and paraprofessional staff, and they'll get the work done. So sure enough, we delivered, a, a, as always, and I'm very proud of that. I do want to thank Lindsay, who sits here tonight with us. She was a major part of pushing our, our, our green teams within the school. And, you know, it, it, there's always someone behind the scenes that, that makes the clock tick. And in this case, you know, Lindsay, you played a major role in that. We want to thank you for that. But all of our employees that pitched in. So congratulations to all of us for this wonderful, wonderful acknowledgement and award. And guess what? Down in October at school boards, we'll be back on the stage for another reason. So we're hoping to get our distinction for future ready work. We'll be getting recognized for our sustainable work. We'll have students competing at, at the steam tank challenge. There's also another, what else? There's another event happening. We'll be doing presentations. So once again, it'll be New Jersey School Boards Annual Conference, but it's really Howells. Let's face it.
Jersey School Boards presents Howell.
Yeah, right. So we're, we're very excited about that. So, but great job. Kudos to all of you for your support and your guidance and your drive to make sure that we played our role in making Howell Township sustainable, more sustainable, more ready, and a better community. So thank you.
I did want to add, and, and I was really remiss in, in not also mentioning the new staff who started yesterday. At various times in our lives, we've all had the opportunities to start a brand-new job and know what it's like to sit in that room and, and be looking at your, your bosses and wondering what's going on. I really want to compliment you, the whole group of the senior staff that was there and the principals and the vice-principals who were there, you know, it was very clear that the effort was being made to have the new staff recognize that they were joining family. This was not, okay, let's start grading you day one. So good luck to all of them.
It's now time for the first public comment. May I, sir?
Please.
Whereas the Howells Township Board of Education determines comments may last 45 minutes, and those comments will be conducted in accordance with bylaw 0164.1 and may be limited to three minutes each. The officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of board. Mr. Bonjovani, may the floor be open?
Sure.
Are there comments from the public at this time? Seeing none, sir. May the floor be closed?
Please.
It is now time for committee updates and liaison reports. Mr. President?
I think I'll start at my left. And Mr. Gurman, I know you're glad that those two presentations we're giving tonight because it probably cut off a good piece of the update you had to give, filling in for Dr. Lowe. So please.
Thank you. Well, as you, as you pointed out, Mr. Bonjovani, the, we heard on Monday at the last committee meeting, two presentations that we as the board now have heard, the overview of the English Language Learner State Assessment and the Dynamic Learning Maps. So we've all had that opportunity at least once. Some of us have had a chance, Ms. Okerson, Mr. Bonjovani, and I had a second chance to hear it. As far as the curricula updates, it was a power-packed meeting, all the work, phenomenal work that's been done over a period of so much time with the teachers and the administrators and putting together improvements to the curriculum. Again, as Mr. Isola pointed out, it's a matter of refining and, and building upon what we've already done. The point that's been made is that we're not talking at this point about new standards or major curricular revisions per se, but we're refining and our curriculum to be better, more effective in achieving the goals we have. One thing we were required to do, based on state standards, is to include a modification section in, in our curricula. And so we've done that. And that's what, what you're, you're presenting. I'm looking at Mr. Preston because there will be times I'm going to ask him to fill in, but he doesn't know where I'm going to do it. Make it more interesting. One thing just to mention, the Dance and Theater Arts Curriculum, we're not changing that, but the state regulations require us to unify the embedded dance and theater standards into a standalone curriculum document. So that's one of the things we've included. Now, I wanted to turn just for a moment to some of the key developments here and what's been done. I'd mentioned, and I, I want to use examples from Social Studies and Language Arts to point out things that we've done, or that, I say we, but again, it, it points out that as a board, we work and support the, the activities of our administrators and teachers and, and staff. So in Social Studies, the curriculum here has updates to continue and identify and build upon resources to support. build upon resources to support and enhance the social studies instruction. This includes identifying additional digital resources, read-alouds, and nonfiction texts. So there's more material that can be used that could be helpful to the teachers in the classroom. One of the issues that came up, Mr. Bonjovani asked the question, that was really interesting, and it elicited a lot of information and discussion. Question was, you've got all this curriculum and all that, but what about, you know, things that are happening currently that are recent, that would matter to students and would matter to all of us? How do you incorporate that into the curriculum? That was your question. And from that came a tremendous answer, again, about being able to use the digital resources using the Internet. I know you've been working on that. And just to use one site that you gave as an example that we had a chance to see is the site Newzella, which I can't wait. I'd love to just spend hours on it. So it's broken up into many different categories, even science, or civics, or geography, or whatever. And you can bring up topics that are being brought up in other venues in the classroom and have all of these fascinating articles. And what's tremendous about Newzella is you can have the same article on a particular topic that is designed, let's say, for a person on the second-grade reading level or even some of them all the way up to high school.
Correct.
So it fits into, and I'm looking at Mr. Preston, who could do a much better job on this, but I do want to point out, at least I absorbed a little of it, why it's important to give the students an opportunity to develop at different levels and to increase their abilities so that they can come in, their floor, they can get involved in an issue and study it at any level. And then the sky's the limit as to how they can develop and use those sources. So that's really exciting. In Language Arts, again, the focus is on refinement and inclusions of modification to support diverse learners. Once again, it's moving in that goal of personalized learning, of setting the curriculum up in such a way that you can address the needs and interests of each student wherever they are at the time. And at this point, we talked and saw a great, you know, discussion and presentation about digital portfolios. And this is another marvelous way for students to celebrate, to reflect, and think about what they've been learning and what they're doing, not only for them, but for their parents and for their teachers. Because the idea is for the students to write down at various points where they are, what they'd like to achieve, what they would like, their goals for the future, to show their best work, to follow their growth, and to follow their progress from year to year and include it in the digital portfolio. So that's a great way of seeing how they're developing. And again, we're talking about working across the curriculum. So as they do work, it might be a literary arts thing, you're always using that. But they might be writing a paper in science or doing something with math and integrating it all, which is all what learning's all about. We create these artificial academic subjects so we can handle them. That's what learning's all about. So we want that excitement, that creativity, and that's, you know, being achieved. Maybe I should throw it over to Mr. Preston.
I think the next most important part that's maybe not spelled out as much in the briefs that went out is the financial literacy piece.
Yes. And that's the part, again, it is a little more specific. But honestly, again, this is the most exciting stuff to talk about, all what our students are getting. And again, financial literacy, if I just take a moment to talk a little bit about, first of all, that, we're talking about the integration of learning. One of the points that was made at the presentation, this is something I have personally observed for years, I'm sure we all have, is that many of our young people today do not deal much with currency, and they don't deal much with coins. And it's a question of knowing how you would add, you know, coins together to count or to subtract. If you go to a counter, now, of course, the machines are all mechanized. But I found for years that if you asked somebody, "Well, here's, I'm giving you $2.10, well, let's say $10.10 to pay for my $7.10 bill," you know, how do I figure that out? To be able to do it, not just depend on a machine to give you the answer. So that's integrating the math and the literacy and all that. But the integration of math and literacy have been added. And in financial, let's just talk a little bit about some of the elements of the financial literacy. In the K-4 curriculum, it's been revised on personal financial literacy standards so that by the end of grade four, students will be identifying and explaining careers and income. Students will differentiate wants and needs by discussing the importance of a budget as well as a way to earn and save. And with that can come investment. You learn that early on. It's tremendous. The earlier you start, the better off you are. This is, again, K-4 curriculum. Students will determine the relationships among income, expenses, and interest in addition to personal responsibility related to borrowing and lending. Students will learn how to make appropriate purchasing decisions by becoming a critical consumer. Two-thirds of our gross domestic product is dependent on consumer spending. We are not only producers, but we're consumers. And that's something we understand in this country, and it's important for young people to be able to understand that. And also being included in this is a consideration of understanding philanthropy and charitable contributions, which is a hallmark of the United States, which is not so true in other countries in terms of the amount of contributions of charity that people give in this country. And it's great to understand that element of the society as well as a young person. Then grades five to eight, mathematics instruction will be discussing the importance of taxes and how they contribute to their community. And how to explain how income affects spending decisions and how careers are a source of income. So there's a tremendous amount here, just to include one other area, distinguish between cash, check, credit, and debit cards, and understand what it means to rack up a debt, you know, when you don't know what you're doing and what the effects of all of that. So all this is being included in the curriculum and is really exciting.
Mr. Gurman, if I may. So especially in the middle schools, we took the financial literacy standards and pushed them into both math and then into social studies. Math, more on that personal finance, the actual calculations of the personal finance matters. And in social studies, more on those macro level, those larger levels, sort of global economy conversations. And then they're embedded into specific units throughout. The longer period represented by the middle school schedule change will also allow the teachers in both those subject areas to break the students up into strategy groups that then they can self-direct, move themselves through a set of online modules that we have found. There's a set of free resources called EverFi. They're free online application software that takes students through. There's a whole variety of courses, but specifically, we'll be using it and have embedded it into the curriculum for your approval tonight. It's embedded into the curriculum to allow the students to walk through the financial literacy standards. So they're aligned to the New Jersey state standards and then some. It allows for students to self-direct, take themselves through their financial literacy modules. So it allows the teacher to give some level of phenomenon, as Mr. Gurman was talking earlier, where they can use those Newzella articles to open up some sort of current event that might capture the attention or the engagement of the children in a very authentic application, in a very authentic, whatever's happening right now in terms of finance. Then the students can peel off into groups and begin to work in a self-directed way through those financial literacy modules, with the teacher then circling back around to help support and fill in what specific information they may need relative to whatever particular area they're studying. So we're excited for that opportunity. That's also, that phenomenon-based instruction is represented in the science curricular changes. While it wasn't a major shift in the content of the curriculum, it was a shift in the way the instruction is going to be delivered or emphasized from more of the phenomenon. The why is this important is put up front instead of waiting all the way to the end. Yeah, so what we're working on now is getting, I don't want to just throw you a link and then send you into the great wide web to get frustrated. So we're going to, we're putting, there is a set of tutorials, so we're going to make sure that those are organized, we're going to make sure that the links all work. And then we're going to get that out to you so that if you would like to go and explore the EverFi site, you can do that. It's set up by dashboard. That's why I want to make sure that dashboards all sound great, and then you get in there and it can be a little confusing. You establish the dashboard as the adult learner for the content that you want to learn. There's health content, there's all sorts of different types of modules that you can go through. We're going to direct you into the financial literacy content that you can then walk yourself through the different modules. Ed Committee had a sample of one of those modules that was shared that night, took us through owning your own, it was establishing a pep business. But then it really, I think what it really displayed was the amount of very specific vocabulary that students can acquire. But the module makes it very accessible for the students to acquire and see what that concept, what that vocabulary actually means, not just hear the definition, now move on, but actually see it in action. So as soon as we, in fairness, if it's not tomorrow, it will be next week. We just want to make sure all those links are ready, but yeah. I'm looking to Ms. Moore. Are we able to share Newzella? I don't, I mean, I know they can get to it, but I don't know if we can share it. Yeah. Yeah, I know we can share a sample, but I don't know if we can get.
If you could share just a sample, I think it would be helpful.
At a future meeting?
At a future board meeting, we can have Ms. Moore and/or Ms. Losinger come out and walk us through that. Yeah, they'll just walk you through it. We won't be able to establish an account for you, but we can show you how we grab, you know, how we are using it on a regular basis and the benefits of that program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Bonjovani, if I could sort of, just one more thing, just to develop it a little more, because I love it. Again, you talked about phenomena, Mr. Preston, and again, discovery-based, personalized learning, getting someone interested in something, and then learning how to discover, how to figure out, how to get to the content, which then suddenly is important. And they're involved, the individual, the students involved in discovering all this. Could you just give us a little bit more? We talked about Newzella, like in certain areas. Could you give us a little bit of example, another one about, say, in science, how you use that?
Yes, but I can't do the one that Ms. Fedina did the other day. She gave us a phenomenon, opening on thermodynamics, and I'll butcher that. But, you know, it really, you know, and if you follow me on Twitter, you've seen, you may have seen that I've posted like math phenomenon or science phenomenon, and certainly has Ms. Fedina. So, for instance, in studying adaptation, right? So if we're looking at, more of the environmental science threads and the biology, if we're looking at adaptations, rather than opening up the instruction by saying, "Animals adapt, environments adapt, here's what adaptations look like, here's the vocabulary." And then by the end of all of that learning, we then get to the, and here's why it's important. Instead, reverse that and start to look at shifting environmental needs, perhaps current events, perhaps it's an article on the debate around climate change. That debate can then bring students around to the high interest of how environments change, causing adaptations of animals to be necessary. That high interest creates the questions that the students might now want to follow. So then they begin to learn, set goals for themselves, and ask the most appropriate questions, follow through, persist on that line of inquiry. Then the teacher begins to come in and fill in the necessary information that the students don't have. So rather than give everyone information that they may or may not have, give the information as it is needed as they move along. Again, the lengthening of the lesson periods also allows for that strategy grouping so that the teacher can meet those needs in those groups as they go through. And then by the end of that, the students start to come to sets of hypotheses or answer their own hypotheses that started with that initial phenomenon. So, but there's also many different places that the student can take their own learning from that initial phenomenon. So it's not so directed on one linear path, but they're all meeting the standards provided to us by the state via their own pathways.
I just wanted to thank you and Mrs. Okerson was also at the meeting the other night, and the citizen members who came through the floods to get there. Very good meeting. Anything to add?
I was already there. I don't need to be thanked. You all drove in it.
I still have two more things quickly connected with the committee. Well, just two more things, moving away from the curriculum. The supervisory responsibility chart was presented. And I would just note, again, we were informed that, again, as we know, the VPs carry many responsibilities in addition to what they do within their own school building. And one of the areas which is now given additional support is one of the VPs is going to serve as a supervisor of the paraprofessionals.
Correct.
So that is a major change there. And then, just for the report, the board had already approved a comprehensive equity plan to submit to the Department of Education. And it's just an update that the Department of Education has approved the comprehensive equity plan for the years 2019 through 2022. And then there's one more element to the report, and that has to do with the organizational chart. In May, the committee was apprised of, in fact, created the position of Director of Special Services. And the organizational chart administration that we have before us reflects that in the new chart. So now.
August is a busy month for us.
It was a great meeting.
Just on, no report on policy committee. On the Legislative Advocacy Committee, I do want to just note that Mr. Sanisak has been in contact with Mr. John Donadio. We have, many of us have seen Mr. Donadio a couple of times. John is the Executive Director of the New Jersey Association of Counties. He's appeared at a number of, well, the last two years, the Legislative Forum of School Boards and PTA programs. He's very knowledgeable. The idea is, again, an opportunity, he has a broad range and knowledge of what's going on in the state. And obviously, there are elements about shared services in counties, but he's just a very good source of information. And our thought was, as a committee, is to expand perhaps to a few of those people, whether it be organizations or individuals who have some base in addition to anybody connected with the legislature per se. And then the second thing, just to report, was, again, something that the committee will be looking at a little more and then hopefully to bring to the board. Obviously, we've already prepared a paper which talks about our position about the idea of not wanting consolidation of all of our districts here with Freo Regional, the eight towns. And of course, in that, we've already talked about and presented our position on special ed and our advocacy there and what should be done. The area that we're talking about with Mr. Sanisak, and we want to now prepare for the committee and then hopefully go to the board as a whole, is to look at the macro issue, and that is why education should get even more support. I start with, this is a board that has Mr. Bonjovani, Mr. Miller, Ms. Malley, all very involved in these crucial organizations, school boards and its involvement and role in legislation. Mr. Miller is Vice, is President of the County School Boards and the role there. Ms. Malley working with the Delegates Assembly. So all these things are going on. The thought is that the Legislative Advocacy Committee, as one supplemental group, can perhaps also look at some of the broader issues and make the case. Because the one point I will mention from the years I worked in Trenton is I know we often look at the bill that seems to be emerging or that soon will be on the governor's desk, and that's crucial. But the other thing, and I, having worked in Trenton for years, I know that the important thing is that legislators and staff people working for them are constantly looking for information, they're constantly looking for analysis, they're constantly looking for perspective. Because everybody comes to Trenton, everybody has needs, everybody is contending for, let's just talk about the budget, everybody's contending for the same amount of money. So what we'd like to do, getting back to what Mr. Sanisak's working on, we want to present, is more of a position paper of why it's crucial to support education, both on the federal and the state level. And for instance, what if we had full funding? And the point is, we have, we talk about, we have the second-best schools in the country in terms of state, you know, performance. Well, we want to do better, but we certainly don't want to lose that. And we don't want to take it for granted. And we want to make the case of why the primacy of education should be there. So it's, again, I'm thinking back to when we presented that. So it's, again, I'm thinking back to when we presented that paper, and I remember Ms. Malley spoke before the legislators, and we had something to hand out. Part of it isn't so much that they're deciding on something on a particular day, but it's giving them a little different framework, so as many of them spend years in Trenton, they can perhaps put a little more emphasis on education. Anyway, so we want to work on that, and we'll soon have it before the committee, and then hopefully before the board.
Paper that was prepared in terms of regionalization, I did have the opportunity to meet with Senator Gopal in his office, handed it to him, spoke to him about our thoughts about that.
We have followed up, and I have a call into his schedule.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gurman. Mr. Thor.
In order to balance out the time between me and Mr. Gurman, there will be no report for committee interaction, we did not meet during the month of August, we are working on a, I think the week of September 25th, we're trying to determine a date, and we'll announce that as soon as that's locked down.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Malley.
Yes. Operations met on August 14th, and we had a robust agenda, a lot to talk about, and I'm having some technical difficulties, so please bear with me. First on the agenda was the ESIP update, which you've already heard some of, the AC is on schedule for September. Like Mr. Sanisak said, it may not be all perfectly pretty, but it'll be working. The kiosks that we've spoken about in the past are all installed and online, and we discussed having more than just solar on the display, and also we discussed where on the websites the links for the kiosks would be found, and the committee recommended that they all be in the same place from school to school, especially if you have children in multiple schools, you want to be able to always go to each building and know exactly where to find the kiosk information. The new boiler is going in at South this week, and 98% of the lights have been changed out, so we're in really great shape with the ESIP. Very good, very good. Okay, here we go, it's not working. Claire. Okay, okay, okay. All right, transportation. Help. Help, I just lost my page.
Come.
No, I, I, okay. Okay, it's coming back, I apologize. Yeah, it's telling me I have a problem with the page, so. Okay, let's try again. All right. What did it just do?
It's buffering.
It's buffering.
It's because you're watching Netflix at the same time.
No, I don't. I'm really not.
I just downloaded it, so you're not going to.
Oh, thank you. All right, transportation update. First talk was bidding. We talked about recent articles that have brought the safety record of a particular bus company into question. We are bound by state bidding laws and must accept the lowest bidder. If there are any safety issues, the committee recommends voicing those concerns to, directly to transportation and/or Mr. Sanisak, so they can be addressed. Expressing concerns on social media may validate them, but it really is not the best way to fix them. Also, the article about our shared service agreement with Freehold Borough was lacking in detail. We will be using vans that currently service Northern Howell. The agreement allows the purchase of two new vans, and the Borough is actually giving us a van to us, so the agreement is a win-win and will not negatively impact any of the Howell routes. Okay, under policy, we have a policy currently in existence for alternate routes, which allows children to be picked up at one location in the morning and dropped off at a different location in the afternoon, but it has to be the same location every morning and the same location every afternoon, it cannot vary from day to day. The locations have to be within the geographical area of the school, currently serviced by a bus route, and based on seating availability, and the committee was in complete favor of enforcing this policy as it stands. Okay. Communication, the committee discussed ways to provide more info to the community, to reduce logjam of phone calls to transportation offices, such as a frequently asked questions section. I believe Ms. Engel is working on this and hoping to get it up and running by the parent portal opening day on August 27th. That is the plan. Okay, and then we talked about routing. For the past two and a half years, this committee has been focused on increasing the efficiency of our transportation, and we've always had the full support of this board, which is so important and very appreciated. This year is the next step in that process, and we may see some community pushback. Our ultimate goal is the safe transport of our over 6,000 students in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible. Our courtesy busing was a Cadillac service, and that is simply not sustainable. It is not sustainable for our equipment, for the environment, and for the budget. Using our new routing software, stopping less frequently, eliminating house stops unless they are IEP-driven, removing all full-size buses from cul-de-sacs are some of the steps taken. We started pulling large buses out of cul-de-sacs last year, completing that process this year. In the past, we've had difficulties maneuvering in cul-de-sacs, especially once cars are parked, garbage and recycling bins are out, et cetera. We've even had to call in the police and fire department to get a bus out of a particularly difficult area. We do not want buses reversing and/or doing crate turns, both are incredibly unsafe. Last year, our efficiency efforts eliminated routes, and this year, we were able to eliminate even more routes. Yes, this will increase the amount of walking some children will have to do, but we look at this as a positive as well. We are big proponents of the New Jersey Healthy Kid Initiative, with a mission to improve child health by conducting evidence-based research, education, and practice in nutrition and physical activity. We are not suggesting that young children walk alone, but we do see bonding opportunities between parents or guardians and older siblings, et cetera. Some of the fondest memories I have as a child, going to school, were walking with my mom when I was little, my older brothers as I got older, and friends when I transitioned to those more responsible tween years. Okay, that's transportation. We moved on to food services after that, and some exciting work being done in food services. We are going to have a new point-of-sale system using Mosaic. The students will actually key in their student ID and on keypad. They'll be located either at the register or maybe a little further back in line, and then there would be a screen at the register that links that with the photo ID, so when the child walks up to the register, they can look at the photo ID, click in the meal, and move on. So it's hoping we're going to make the lines move a lot quicker, and, but if the child does forget their student ID number, which most of them, I think, have that pretty much ingrained in, because they need it for a lot of reasons, like schoollegee and such, but if they do forget it, we can still use the swipe system that they had previous, so that'll still be there. And we're also going to hopefully, okay, wait, sorry, move services. Now, the next thing that's exciting, I'm excited about, is that we're going to pilot in the middle schools a Meatless Monday option, and we're going to probably collaborate that with health and the science teachers, educating about, you know, eating more healthy choices, as well as the environmental impact of the meat industry, so that's pretty exciting.
As long as there's burgers, I'm good.
What was that?
As long as there's burger, oh, sorry.
Mr. Sanisak does not want to give up his meat. That's okay. Buildings and grounds, we received a new mower and a trailer, but the purchase of the truck has been put off due to Ford not offering or taking orders at the present time. The cleaning at North is continuing as a result of the power failure which you heard from Mr. Sanisak. We did have a mold and started developing, but thankfully, with the diligence of our crew and professionals, it was discovered early, and a mold remediation company is well underway with the cleaning. All will be well for September, we're here tonight. The media center is fine for orientations, certain parts of the buildings may be off limits until the cleanup is complete. And then we went on to safety, told you we had a lot. We have a bomb scare policy that we will need to update, and we want to do the crisis manual, will be expanded to match the updated policy, so we recommend it that to go to the policy committee. On August 29th, the Monmouth County Active Shooter Drill will occur at Greenville School, and just so that the community is aware of that. And as far as throughout the year for safety, drills with teachers and odd timing for drills, use of the wave system will continue, adding reunification drills in the spring. And then we had other items that may arise. For training, bus drivers, in Monmouth County, special needs training held last year, the question is, would we hold it again this year? The committee discussed, due to state now requiring their training two times a year, which does have a special needs component, after Paramus, the state said that now we have to do it twice a year. So adding the county training may require adjustment of the work year, and Mr. Sanisak will follow up with that. Also asked was whether information sheets would be given to the parents to fill out for their special needs bus drivers. Ms. Fernandez was asked about this, and she would like to continue the direction Ms. Callender set last year when this question was brought up. Then we have a garage sale, we have accumulated a quantity of unused items, for example, the rolling carts that we no longer need since we went, we went one-to-one technology. It's proposed to hold a garage sale, auction-style, for a fair and open opportunity to purchase. The sale will be advertised and open to the community, what is left will go to scrap or junkyard, and the official announcement for that will be made in September meeting. And then the last thing, I was saving for the last great hurrah, but everyone's already announced it, Sustainable NJ. That's okay. It's not, you know, it wasn't official as of last Friday, but it is official as of today that all 12 of our schools are bronze certified. I am more than proud of those efforts that were put out, and I wanted to send a special thank you to Lindsay for all of her efforts and hard work, because somebody has to enter all that information in the computer.
Let's stop with the Lindsay, it's going to her head, all right?
Lindsay, thank you so much, congratulations to all the schools. And now Lindsay is working with the building admins to apply for fall grants, so that's the next process, and we're looking forward to seeing some of that come to fruition. And, well, minutes were approved, and that concludes my report.
Ms. Malley, your group just continues to that committee, such a, such a wealth of different topics. Thank you for sharing it for as long as you have.
Oh, thank you, I love it.
I will open it up to the board, but I do have a question real quick first, the active shooting drill, is there something we can put on our Facebook account or someplace just to make sure that the community is aware of that?
We have already discussed, we will put notices out, however, it is a, it's the Western Monmouth County, Lieutenant Fowler is the leader of that, and I've already reached out to him, I want to make sure that we put whatever, I want to work on the wording with him, to make sure it's what he wants to say. So, we have a great partnership and, and, you know, we cooperate with them, it's their drill, it's not ours, they're just asking to use our building.
Anybody, I mean, we still.
But yes, we will notify the public that, should they see a lot of emergency vehicles there, there's not an issue, but the exact wording, before we go putting something up, I've asked him to work with me on that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thor.
I have a lot of questions, I don't know if this is appropriate now for discussion or discussion later, or now, all right. So, I had to make a list, because I can't remember all of this. Two questions, first of all, regarding bus contracts. What is, and this might be more for Mr. Sanisak, what is the exact law regarding busing and bidding? Does it specifically say in the law that we cannot consider safety records? What is the parameters of that law?
It does not say you may not, it says you will award to the low bidder who has not been excluded by what's called previous bad acts, and in order to exclude a contractor by previous bad acts, there's a whole process that includes giving them the opportunity to cure, bringing them before the board, and standing before a judge, and that has not happened, and I just, Ms. Malley, and mentioned the conversation at the committee meeting, I went into a little more depth there. I take transportation very seriously on behalf of this district, this district takes transportation very seriously, and it is my job, and my job through the department, to administer whatever contract is awarded under the laws of the state of New Jersey purchasing requirements. And there, from time to time, is a less-than-stellar contractor on the property. It is not always the one that's in the newspaper, and frankly.
And obviously, I'm specifically referring to Jays after that high-profile article, but there's others.
I can tell you this, I don't want to get into it, because it's, it's, I'm not going to get into details, because it's my job to run it on behalf of the board, but that contractor was not our worst one last year.
Interesting.
So although he may have had, he, it's not, he, it happens to be a man's name, so I frequently say he, and it's a, it's a company. They performed at or above an acceptable level last year.
What is considered an acceptable level, though?
On time, good drivers. We had two other vendors that I removed three or four drivers from their routes, that's what I do on a daily basis, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say they're great, none of the contractors are spotless, and none, frankly, from time to time, I deal with issues with our buses. But just like Mr. Preston deals with teachers and, and, you know, there, we deal with those things. I would love for the law to change and allow us to set more criteria, I think the state should work on that, and that's something that we kind of have on our list of advocacy, you know, but the purchasing laws, I don't want to get into my class here, I teach the class for Rutgers.
I mean, I think this is a topic.
But the purchasing laws in New Jersey are meant to protect the businesses. They really are more tilted towards creating a fair and open playing field for everyone to be eligible to get our business, rather than giving us the opportunity to restrict who can work for us. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, obviously, a lot of the way the law is written is to protect, you know, nepotism and stuff like that, and, you know, awarding of contracts to your buddies and stuff like that, that's, I think most people who are reasonable understand that. But this is one of these topics that is, and obviously, it's been on social media, so we've seen it there, but it's something that people talk about, just in general in this community and communities around the state, and it, I mean, I'm concerned as a parent, who have kids who ride three different buses to school. I mean, at what point are we, as a public entity, allowed to pull a contract because a company has a history of multiple violations? What point are we allowed to not, to disqualify a company from bidding because of their performance?
So, and I would, I could be here till midnight, I love this topic, but you ask two different questions, pulling a contract for an infraction and disqualifying from bidding are two very different and distinct things.
It's a two-part question, yes.
Okay? We have pulled individual routes and/or packages back from contractors, and I'm very proud of what I do, so I hope I'm not sounding defensive, but I can make the worst contractor perform better, because that's what I do for a living, that's what you pay me to do in part. So, it is my daily duty to try to get them to live up to the criteria, and I believe Howell Township gets better performance out of all the contractors. I mean, we abused the poor gentleman when we went to Philadelphia on the one contractor on being late, and that's what we do. So we have pulled contracts, we have negotiated with contractors not to bid the following year, and if someone were so egregious in Howell, they would be before this board trying to appeal my decision to exclude them from bidding, I guarantee you that. But that contractor that has gotten the social media has not done those bad acts in Howell. Now, there are parents who have had trouble with an individual driver, an individual route, it's been dealt with.
I know it hasn't happened in Howell, but I'm concerned about that it will happen in Howell, because it's happened elsewhere.
And I, I join you in being concerned, I'm concerned about that in Howell with every piece of yellow equipment that is moving with our babies on it. I don't just concern myself with contractor A, B, or C, or even our drivers, anything can happen. You know, the Paramus driver was an in-house driver, you know, those things, I lose sleep over, and I will, I'll get teared up if I talk too much. I take it very seriously. I don't, if I had the ability to say, you, John Q. Incorporated, do not bid on our work, I assure you, we would be doing that, but we live in the system that we live in.
So basically, the only way for us to rectify the situation would be to work with legislative advocacy and try to get our legislators involved in trying to change the way that law is written.
We could lobby for that. We could lobby for that, and I'm not, I sound defensive, and I keep, I want to make sure, all due respect, you're saying the situation as if it exists in Howell. It doesn't.
I know it doesn't currently exist in Howell, but I'd like to protect it, and I know you've shared the same beliefs about safety as do our entire board. You know, I'm thinking long-term.
Right.
And I don't want us to be, you know, something happens down the line, well, we were bound to a certain company, regardless of who they are, because they were the lowest bidder. And I'd like to see if we can work creatively to kind of work with...
You know, we interacted with about six different transportation companies in addition to our own in-house.
No, for sure, and I read, obviously, all the bids that were awarded tonight in the contract, and there were multiple companies that, you know, based on bidding are awarded that, so I'm just, you know, this is something that, you know, keeps you up at night, this is something that perpetually bothers me, and I know it bothers members of our community, you know, very widely. And I think it's something that I'd like to see if we can work creatively to kind of address, that companies that are, you know, obviously, one specifically is getting the attention in the media, but there are others out there. And if there's a way around, you know, just because you're the lowest bidder doesn't mean you're the one who gets to bid if you don't meet certain criteria. You know what I'm saying?
Right, absolutely, but they meet the criteria that we are allowed to set.
Alright, so I'd like to request...
I think overall, there's a busing shortage, isn't there?
Yeah, there's also a busing shortage, yeah.
Like, they can't get good people, because if we could do all our routes, then we'd do all our routes, like, you know...
Right, I mean, we would do more of our work if we had drivers.
Right.
We're doing pretty well now.
But, but I'm saying it's not just here, like, I've heard it all over the, you know, and...
In fact, I had two calls this week from other districts that would like some assistance that we're considering shared services.
But my other point is that if anybody does have an issue, they should contact transportation, because I've contacted transportation, and things have worked out. Every day, we're on a first-name basis with our secretary there, no, but my situation was unique, but honestly, every one of them will work with you. If you call them and explain calmly the situation, or if there is an issue, like, that's where our first thing to start is, isn't it?
No, for sure, but I'd like to see if we can solve the problem before it becomes a problem. That's where my thought process is with this, obviously. Some people also, we know that some people, obviously, are either hesitant to pick up the phone and call, and they'd rather discuss on social media, we know that's the world we live in, but I, again, I just...
But then that's on them, man.
What'd you say?
Come on, that's on them. If you have a problem, call and handle it, if not, don't complain about it.
Listen, if those people are gonna do that, that's on them, but, I mean, I just want to be careful in advance, and if there's a way that we could work around this law, or help change the law...
I mean, Mr. Isola will probably confirm this. When there is a gray area that I can push into on any regulation and with any contractor, I push past that gray area into the black. Sometimes he yells at me for that, but, you know, I assure you that all the protections, criteria, restrictions that I can legally and ethically put on the purchasing is put on.
Okay.
And we are handicapped by the law. Again, the law was, and I don't believe the legislature is inclined to go away from protecting businesses. They exist because of the businesses in some cases. So, but I would love to. I love the topic, and I would love to add it in more depth. It's been on the list, but we can elevate it should the entire board want to go down that road.
Before you get to the next topic, you said you were gonna bring up, and I'm just kind of anticipating, my question for you is, should the recommendation in terms of the bus stop, where the buses are stopping in the distance and stuff, should that come out of committee as a motion, or is it just...
It absolutely can. We've been working, frankly, Ms. Malley said, two and a half years, but really, I remember when Ms. Nowicki brought it up 20 years ago. So, you know, but we've been working that direction. It would be helpful if, after tonight, there was a motion and a direction, yes.
That's my topic.
I would suggest making a motion, just so that the following discussion can be discussion on a motion. So, Ms. Malley, could you make a motion regarding the stop coming out of committee?
Sure. Right now?
Please.
I move that, the recommendation of the operations committee to remove large buses from cul-de-sacs, and overall, increasing the walking distance as recommended by the committee be adopted by this board.
Do you have a second?
I second it. Could I, Ms. Malley, can I just add into your motion that the loop stops also be included? That was discussed at operations.
Alright, the loop stops as well, yes. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Okay, let's open that for discussion.
I have...
The A1 that we're now discussing.
Please, Mr. Thor.
I have seven questions regarding this, and I wrote, again, I wrote them all down. Number one, has this busing pickup change been discussed with the police department at all?
Yes.
What was the feedback from the police?
Actually, the last feedback, it wasn't for this meeting, now remember, this has been a multi-year situation. We had complaints from the police department because buses were holding up traffic, and they were getting complaints from commuters and businesspeople that they were late, because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it was Tanglewood. Previous to that, it was Glen Arden, that people could not get through the town. And as we continue to get more densely populated and more vehicles on the street, the buses stopping with their red lights, and I can, again, I can get into a lot of description. Motor vehicle code says that you have to have your red lights on 300 feet before you stop. There were many streets where we were stopping in less than 300 feet, so they just kept their reds on and just kept picking up more kids, to the point where people tried to go around them, cursed, yelled, harassed the drivers, and the police did ask us if there was a way to stop more, less frequently. I'm sorry.
What happens in neighborhoods, because we're talking about the kids walking further, what happens in neighborhoods without sidewalks? Because we have a lot of those in this town. I think that's a question of safety of these kids.
There's a lot of neighborhoods in Howell without sidewalks, whenever someone's walking, they're using the asphalt. That's not a specific criteria.
A lot of these kids are gonna be walking alone in the morning. A lot of these kids are gonna be walking alone in the morning, when they're walking at night, you know, they're often with a parent or something like that, but if the kids are walking alone in the mornings, often when it's dark out, depending on the time of the year, I think that's a safety concern.
We're...
We're asking these kids to walk further.
Would the committee discuss this? We actually did several, over several meetings, in-depth conversations about even specific, we would have specific cul-de-sacs brought up on the screen, and we talked about it, we measured distances, we had in-depth conversations, and I don't believe there are any that have no sidewalks that were...
No, I would, not to disagree, but I believe there are some, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm...
There's many, many of the new streets do have sidewalks, but I would not, tonight, say there are no cul-de-sacs that are lacking sidewalks.
Okay.
I'm sure there are. Somebody would find one, I'm sure.
How far is the corner from where you are? You're talking about...
Are you talking your morning or your afternoon?
Four or five houses, but here, we may be talking about, you know, quarter of a mile, half a mile, and that's a big difference in four or five houses. Now, for example, from, I'll give you an example from my house. Now, I live on one of these cul-de-sacs where you have a huge turning area, so it's never been an issue for buses, but, you know, I can, it's a quarter of a mile from where my house is to where my kids will be picked up. We can't see them.
Yeah, but we're not proposing, like I said in my report, and everyone in the committee also said that, that we're not sitting here saying that the children should be walking alone, especially young children.
So...
I wouldn't expect you to have your child walk alone, but...
What happens at, what happens...
Providing visibility from everyone's front stoop is really not something that we can sustainably manage and go forward with. That is what we have been doing, we can't continue doing that. It's, we have to get the children to school, and we are not, Mr. Isola has said it in the past, you know, it may be yellow, but it's not a taxi. We have been providing Cadillac-style service. We've been going house stops, we've been going right up to people's front doors, and unfortunately, that is not sustainable. The equipment wears, the brakes wear down, the environmental impact of the stop and go, and stop and go. And like Mr. Sanisak said, I've been reading articles, I've been reading articles from all different states, all across, all across the nation, about people blowing through the stop signs. The school buses have their flashers on in the stop signs.
That's gonna continue to happen, whether these changes happen or not.
But the more the bus stops, the more opportunities there are for that happening. That's just another safety issue, but that gives more opportunity for the person behind the bus stopping all the time, getting annoyed and going around. Or, you know, they haven't picked up a kid, they haven't picked up a child, in the last three stops, no one's crossed the road, I'm going this time. And then that's the time that the child will cross the road, so it just opens that risk up.
How much time is, on average, and you may not have these figures with you, Mr. Sanisak, how much time is gonna be saved? And I hear you about the environmental and the equipment, that's obviously a different topic, but time-wise, obviously, because you're talking about efficiency, how much time is gonna be saved with these changes, on average, per stop, per route? Is it, you're talking about five minutes, you're talking about 10 minutes, half an hour?
It's a, it's a, there is no single identifiable piece of data of what was saved by what, because it's all redone. So by having more children get on at a given stop, and having less turning and jockeying, it allows the bus to complete the route faster, so the bus can get more full before going to the school. So, the way we do our system, it's either 30 minutes or 45 students. When the bus gets to that point, if the bus, use Parkside down in Ramtown for an example, one stop has 20-some children on it, that bus gets filled up in seven minutes. So it goes to school right away, because there's no more seats. Other buses in rural areas take the full 30 minutes and only have 30 children on them. So the more we can either expedite the route or fill the seats, it's a double-edged sword, the more efficient and fewer vehicles we need. Does that answer your question?
No, it does. I mean, obviously, it'd be hard to quantify that. You mentioned Ramtown, it brings up, and you're familiar with this one, last year, there was a parent who had reached out to us because of safety, because their child, I think they were sixth grade or seventh grade or fifth grade, or somewhere in that age range, was the only child in a very large cul-de-sac, maybe it was half a mile long, and it was, child's gonna be waiting by themselves. So what's gonna happen now, when that child's gonna have to go even further and be by themselves? I mean, I'm, again...
There, I would venture to say, and the committee discussed some of those things, you know, age-appropriate supervision is, I think, the term that the committee discussed. There's, I'm sure, again, just like I would not say there aren't cul-de-sacs without sidewalks, I would not say there's not another place where a child's waiting alone. We have a large population, I would say it's very rare, but one way to keep them from waiting alone is to have them walk further to the stop, right, to go to where more students are. So that's one of the, that's one of the...
But what about when there are, still are no students in that area? I'm just, I, these are things I know we're gonna hear about, and I'm trying...
Absolutely, and that's why Ms. Malley said there may be some pushback, but respectfully, my department and I will administer the protocols as described, but if a child who should not be waiting alone doesn't have other people at the bus stop, the assumption was made by the committee that there would be appropriate, age-appropriate supervision.
Well, I'm not talking about a kindergartner, obviously, that would be insane. I'm talking about 12-year-olds who are walking to the buses by themselves, et cetera. That's what I'm discussing here.
My, just where I used to live, by, it was about a block and a half that my daughter, from kindergarten up, used to have to walk, she was the only child at that stop, and we lived in a cul-de-sac. We had to walk her to the bus stop. I mean, the bus never came down that cul-de-sac, and, you know, it, unfortunately, it's something we knew we had to do. It was either we were gonna let her go by herself, which wasn't gonna happen, because it was the time of the day, or we had to go with her, which we wound up doing.
That's not always an option, though, within, you know, in a town where, in a society where we have two parents working, though.
I, it's tough, it's tough, but for, I mean, we have to think, we, unfortunately, when we sit up here, we have to think of 6,000 children. And, you know, and not only the children, we have to think of the taxpayers, and, you know, and...
Of course.
We have to get all these children to school, and when we look at not only the sustainability of it, I mean, here we just got 12 schools certified under sustainability, and one of the things is walking, children walking to school, which would gain us points, and that's something, we've been working on this now, I think we're like in phase three, I mean, last year was the first year we started pulling buses out of cul-de-sacs. I mean, we're starting now going further into those cul-de-sacs, but last year, we started pulling buses out of other cul-de-sacs, so parents were starting to be affected by buses not going into certain cul-de-sacs last year. And, you know, unfortunately, we are, we hit with that, but we have to also think, like, we have buses that are half-full going to schools because of the time limit. This will allow now more students getting to a centralized bus stop, and those buses now being able to transport more students, and allowing us to get less vehicles on the streets at any given time, which, you know, for a safety reason, will, you know, for the safety of the children, it's better, because we have less buses on the road, and plus, you know, the stopping and going of the buses, and, you know, less routes we have to send out to the contractors.
Dr. Jeffrey, you're on that committee, thoughts?
Yeah, I had one, I'm gonna sound like an evil guy, but the term is courtesy busing, and we need to do, we have the two sort of constituencies, the children and the taxpayers, and the community. It's better if we can remove some buses out of unsafe locations, and that's what we've tried to do.
I'm gonna make a real quick comment, and it's actually on something that Mrs. Malley said before. I've had the opportunity, not that I live in there, in Glen Arden, to see how often some of the buses are stopping. And if you're one of the cars who are trying to get to work in the morning, and you are behind one of those buses who's stopping every 80 feet, thank God it hasn't happened, but I really do think that that's gonna be the situation where one day, somebody's gonna say, "I've gotta get to work, I've got a meeting", and it's gonna blow by the stop, the bus. I don't know that this helps to alleviate or not, but that is a concern for me, that I think, in general in our society, people are becoming less concerned with that red sign coming out of the side of the bus. But I know you have other questions.
I mean, I don't want to keep us here all night, I have others, but I don't need to ask them at this time, but, I mean, you know, I'm like, I'm...
What I would ask...
I'm concerned, for example, you know, a parent who's handicapped, that's already walking, you know, a quarter mile or so to a bus stop, now having to walk half a mile or some, et cetera, you know? You're gonna have cars sitting there idling, you know, in the cold, you're gonna have a lot of cars now sitting there, three, four, five, six, seven, at a stop sign, waiting for the bus. You know, there's, I think there's a lot of things that we're not thinking about.
But here's the other thing, Ira, how much were we cut? I mean, I don't have the exact number, I know it was like eight to 10 million this year, and then with the...
Well, by the end of S2, if it sustains, again, we may have another governor before it's done, but, you know, we'll be 12.7 million.
Right, like, you have to save money somewhere, and this is better for the environment, and it's better for the taxpayers, and, you know, at some point, you have to be a parent.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. How much money are we gonna save, Mr. Sanisak? Obviously, that's important here.
Well, we cut about 16 segments last year and 22 segments this year, that would be 38, and that, so that's the equivalent of 13 packages. Each package is probably $80,000, so, and it's a process, and again, it's not the only thing, and Mr. Miller and I had a conversation, this is not singularly for budget, and there's other things we're doing to meet the budget. this is not singularly for budget, and there's other things we're doing to meet the budget. It's an overall conglomeration, I think, the, the, uh, the, uh, Ms. Malley pointed out, the sustainability and the diesel fumes and, um, the congestion on the road. Uh, but it's a process, and we continue to be more efficient, we continue to, you know, I continue to shop for pencils at a fraction of a cent less. All those things going together are what give us the flexibility to be able to announce the things like we did, um, the parking lot at Ardena, and those things are all because of that long-term planning that we've been doing.
So this will save you...
So I don't wanna say that this is, you know, we're saving the budget by this, although I appreciate those comments, but it's part of the process.
I, I, I really do, and I, and you've never heard me cut off a discussion before. I do appreciate the concern here, but I also wanna make sure that I point out to the public or anybody else who's watching this or will watch it, or read the, the notes about the meeting, this is not something that happened over the last two days. This has been an ongoing discussion in operations for two years? And, and it's been in minutes, and it's been talked about at the meetings. So, I please don't ever, I don't, I don't want anybody, whether it's at this table or home, to ever become aware of this and think, well, over the last two days, they decided to do something.
Well, it didn't say specifically on the agenda that busing will be discussed, it said operations. It didn't say busing. That was not, and I read the agenda to make sure I didn't miss it, it never said busing will be discussed, it said operations.
I'm looking at the agenda and the, and the draft for the education committee meeting minutes are on the agenda right now. I'm looking at it, but that's not the point I just made. The point I'm saying is that discussion in terms of the busing and the stops did not develop two days ago. This has been an ongoing conversation at operations, and has been reported on at operations for close to two years now. So, I just, again, my purpose for that point is just to make sure that nobody thinks this is a, oh, let's do something because of what happened with the 1.2, uh, 1.2 million. This has been, what's the number?
10, 12 million.
Yeah. This has, this has been an ongoing conversation. Unless you feel that we need to continue the discussion right now, what I'd really like to do is see if we could move on.
Can I just interject one moment? I just wanted to clarify, um, basically, I think on every single agenda for the last two and a half years, transportation has been listed. I, I, I don't know for sure, but I'm pretty sure transportation has pretty consistently been on there, and that includes busing.
Transportation is, is virtually discussed all the time, but if it, it didn't specifically say busing on the agenda, which is my point.
Oh, but that's...
The operations agenda did say...
Transportation means busing.
The opera, we're checking, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna factual debate that happened if there's no reason for it. The operations agenda, Bruce says what, routing?
Under transportation update, it says bidding, routing, policy, communications.
So the most recent operation, that's all I see here, does indicate that. I don't know if Mr. Thor is referencing the board agenda or the...
I'm, I'm discussing the board agenda.
Yeah, okay.
The one that the pub, the one that the public would say is the board agenda.
Mr. Bonjovani, are you moving off of Mary Rose's report completely? Are you moving off of Mary Rose's report completely?
No.
I, I was, I was hoping to put to bed the discussion about the transportation, just for now. And, and one of the reasons why we make sure that the meeting minutes, that the committee meeting minutes are on the agenda ahead of time is so that if a particular board member, and I realize it's not for the public always, but, but if a particular board member has a question about something that was in the minute meetings, the opportunity is always there to call either the chair from that committee or the appropriate administrative liaison. So, for example, some of these questions could have been addressed to Mr. Sanisak ahead of time or to Mrs. Malley ahead of time.
Just got the minutes from the meeting, though, last night, though. I didn't have time to do that, because that's when it was attached to the agenda. If I had seen it further in advance, I probably would've taken that advantage.
Okay.
I just, I just, you started with the ESIP, and then we got into other, other things. And I, I wasn't on the board when you guys started that, was that your baby? The ESIP, like, the air conditioning and all of that, like, anyway, it's great, it's awesome. And I just wanted to compliment you if it was yours. Like I said, I wasn't on here when that started, but I have heard in, um, the community how excited everybody is about it, and, and we're catching a lot of crap up at the high school for it, but, um...
You're welcome.
They, uh, you know, it, it's awesome, because you're saving money and air conditioning. And, you know, I, my spoiled child started in an air-conditioned school and then went to a non-air-conditioned school, so she is over the moon about it. But it, it really is an awesome thing, because it, it does both and budget neutral, so, awesome with that.
Very, very, a very exciting process it's been with that, so, thank you.
Yep, that's good.
Is it okay to move forward?
For sure. Thank you, thank you for listening to my concerns. I just wanna thank everyone for listening to my concerns. I tip, I typically don't ask this many questions, but this is something that has, I've been bothering me. And I know it's gonna be, just be prepared, because we're gonna get a lot of pushback from members of the community, I believe.
Yes, and I believe that transportation and Ms. Vasquez, and, and she's got a, they're ready.
And, and, Mr. Thor, if there's other technical or operational questions that you had that, that you still, you know, the policy issue is the board, but if there's something specifically about the function of the department, you know, you can call me.
I have about 15 to 20 other questions, but...
You said seven, you said seven.
No, no, seven was for us to discuss, the others I will discuss with you offline, because we all wanna go to sleep eventually.
And I did wanna just say one thing, and, and you made a, you made a point that, and it's, uh, actually, it's in regards to the point you made, and it's a thank you to Mr. Preston. So thank you on, for having gotten the education minutes out so quickly. And it does speak to something we had a conversation at the retreat about, that maybe we all need with all of our committees to be concerned with having our meetings with enough time so that the, so that the committee minutes don't come out the night before you make an exit. That is something I think as a group will continue to look at.
And within cabinet, we've had the conversation of, historically, Ed liked to do the Monday prior to the Wednesday board meeting. I've asked him to back that up a week, or, or move that forward a week, so it's a week and a half.
Thank you so much.
So those types of things, we're gonna try to coordinate with the board calendar. And then as we, in November, make the new board calendar for January adoption, we'll be thoughtful of that as well.
And I'm not saying that, you know, I would never have questions on the dais. I think there are things that are important that we, you know, and we're gonna disagree on things. I, I think it's so important we have these conversations on the dais.
Absolutely.
However, there's some questions I could have asked, you know, three, four, five days in advance, probably off the dais, had I obviously, you know, had a chance to read at that time. And I know it's not always possible, just based on the timings of things, so...
No, I do agree with you, and I think the recent history of this board over the last 10 months or eight months or whatever it has been, has been that we've been having more and more conversations here in front of the public, 'cause I do believe it's, it's worthwhile for the public to hear how we come to our decisions. Thank you, great point. Mr. Miller?
The finance committee has not met. Um, the first Monmouth County School Board meeting is Thursday, October 10th, at the Coltsenek Inn. A workshop for New Jersey school boards is on Monday, October 21st to the 24th. Uh, on the 21st, uh, the county, um, association is hosting an ed camp. Uh, on the 22nd, our district is running, um, a program, Pathways and Pitfalls to Schools Reimagine. And on the 23rd, uh, they are hosting Creating High Quality In-District Special Education Programs. So, um, if you wanna check those programs out while you're down at workshop, um, I encourage you to do so.
Just a note about workshop, just a reminder to anybody on the board who needs to complete any of the training requirements. Training requirements are first, second, and third year of the first term, first year of every subsequent term. The Thursday down there is always an opportunity to fulfill those requirements, so just a point of interest.
And we also have them at foundations, um, here and at the December county meeting, where, um, co-hosting with, um, Ocean County. And that's all I have.
Dr. Jeffrey? What do you want to add tonight?
That concludes committee reports, sir. Okay, it is now time for the consent agenda and the A1, or, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, district branding, I apologize. Sorry, sir.
That I was gonna ask.
Yeah, I'd rather pass. So, good evening again. Um, I think Ms. Angle's gonna be helpful here by pulling up. Each of you have, um, just a little pamphlet in front of you, uh, looking like this. The charge at a retreat was to work on the ones that received the most support when we did our gallery walk, come to the board with a, uh, two proposals, and this way the board could discuss those and perhaps make a decision about a logo and slogan that we can help move, that best represents our district's work and the motion in which we're going. So we kinda have incorporated, uh, the best of the two that we thought got the most, uh, likes. Uh, we then put a border here, a circular border list to keep it, the concept here was to keep it contained and clean. Uh, and if you just flip over to the next one, Ms. Angle, please, just real quick, you all have this in front of you, I believe. Uh, but, yep, and this one does not have the complete border. It's, the wording has been upgraded from, well, we believe upgraded, from the presentation that we saw back at the retreat. We think that really pops out and represents, uh, hashtag how it leads, bold, it's, it's confident, and we think the, the font here, the forward-facing W is like failing forward in a sense, right, Bruce? Um, but the, again, both of these are merely proofs of concept. We did this in our office with Bruce and Katie and Claire with a pen and pencil at one point, and, you know, we just kinda, uh, hammered away at it. This would, once you, once, if and once you select one of these, we then put this out to a graphic designer and a printer, and we get true proofs back for our, uh, this final decision, of course. Um, and I guess ultimately the third would be to stick with what we have is always an option, but, uh, we're looking to, uh, you know, update the image of the district through our branding and logo. Um, and, uh, so these are the two that we brought to you tonight. I did share them with Mr. Miller, our vice president, Mr. Bonjovani, our president, at yesterday's, uh, new staff orientation. We just peeled away for a few seconds to keep them in the loop and make sure that this was okay to bring to the entire board, and they directed us to do so. So, thank you for the split screen, Ms. Angle, I appreciate that greatly. So, uh, at this point, sir, I'll turn it over to you for, to lead discussion on this topic as the president, the presiding officer.
Just a real quick note, uh, from yesterday's discussion, I already like, uh, Mr. Preston, I like the change that was made on the, uh, one that shows on the right there, uh, changing the township public schools. Uh, we did have a discussion...
Could I, could I just ask why you're thanking Mr. Preston?
Pardon me?
Can I ask why you're thanking Mr. Preston for that?
Because I know who did this.
Oh, oh. With the greatest amount of respect, you'd be mistaken on that topic.
Well, as a group member, well, then I'll, whoever made that change from the version we saw yesterday, whoever made the change, I like. I'll open it up to the, who wants to make a comment first?
Cleaner to me, the one on the left seems a little fuzzy.
Because yesterday I was, I was reading George's, the one on the left, but, um, looking at it today, I, I, I do like the one on the right.
The one on the left, to my eyes, it doesn't look as static at all. Basically, I'm looking at what I'm pointing, and I'm not supporting you, that has basically a faint or a water-stained vision of the other... Of the one on the right?
Is it better in the image on the paper? Okay, it's just the busyness of, yeah.
Mr. Gerber?
Yeah, it's just a matter aesthetically, I know when I like something, and the one on the right is far better to me in terms of what I like, I didn't like the one on the left. The other question is, uh, I noticed that with the terminology, everyone has a voice, period. Every voice matters, exclamation point. So, I guess, obviously, the point is you're emphasizing that every voice matters.
I'm sure Mr. Sol made that. He's probably wanting to better parts of it. What, the, the period?
Oh, yes.
I did not.
Mr. Thor?
I, I am envisioning next year at the new staff orientation, Mr. Bonjovani, Mr. Miller wearing a polo shirt with one of these two logos. I'm gonna get a back patch and put it on my jean jacket, so... And envisioning you guys in the fall of 2020, I like the one on the right better. I think it's, after studying these two, standing up here, looking at them from a distance, I think it's clearer, you know? Do, I mean, am I in love with either of them? You know, I, I don't know if it's something I would put on the side of my car, but I like the one on the right better. Yes.
I only have one question, is our embroiderer on board with the new logo?
Whatever it is will have to be digitized, and yes.
Can we get a deal from Adidas?
The one on the right is my favorite, I'm...
I like the one on the right, too. Not to, not to fall for a group think or anything, but no, I like it.
I think you have, I think we have...
Moving right along, it's time for the consent agenda, so, so...
I was not a fan of the baseball on the left.
So...
You all agree on, you all agree on style.
I said that, yes, I saw it, the second I saw it, I said it's a baseball, I just, I wasn't...
It's a button, it's a button.
And that was the other thing I said.
I'm just appreciative that you like my bold, howl, uh, font, very appreciative of your support there, sir. With that being said, do I hear direction then to get this out to a professional to, to kinda hone in on it? Remember, proof of concept, this is a kind of a, from a stock thing that Bruce put together and pulled and kinda created it himself, but we believe a professional will be able to even make this a more clean, cleaner image, and, and perhaps the people will look a little different, but the concept will be there, and then we'll come back with the proof that we get from that.
We would hope that it stays pretty close to this.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, in conceptual, like, the only difference you may get is a circle around it, no.
What?
Replace the, the pine trees?
Upon the board's approval, once we're done with this, that would be something that would happen. And I'm gonna be full...
No, no, stop.
Right, no, the only thing you'll get back is the actual image that we will, and we wanna make sure that the board likes that before we advance that with that. What I would answer to Mrs. Okerson's question is, this will phase out the, the pine trees simply 'cause we have pencils with them, and we'll use what we own, right? And then, but this will go up on the website, on anything that we print new, and over the next year or so, everything will transition to this. But it would be wasteful to throw out any letterhead that we own or, you know, things of that nature. Uh, we wouldn't wanna do that, but certainly it will ultimately, uh, transition the pine trees out.
Do you have direction?
Get this one flat.
Um, on the consent...
Can, can I add one more thing? I, just aesthetically, this looks a lot kind of like the tree, so it's, it's, there's some migration and some maintenance of the past, some history.
Thank you.
Continuity.
Looks like a lot of trees.
We talked about that all along. Thank you.
Shall we take the consent agenda and A1, sir?
Please.
Is there a mover and a seconder? I'm sorry, I heard the second.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Moved by Mr. Miller.
Sorry, man, I thought it was you.
Second by Mrs. Malley.
Gotta get on that, man.
On the consent and A1, Mr. Miller? Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes, except I'm regrettably gonna vote no on A1.
Mr. Bonjovani?
Yes, but I recuse myself on 3,033.
Thank you, sir. The consent agenda and A1 are approved, seven votes and none opposed on the consent agenda, six votes in favor, one opposed on A1. It is now time for the second public comment, sir, may I?
Please.
Whereas the board welcomes public comment...
Whereas the board welcomes public comment, may be limited to 45 minutes, in accordance with its bylaw 164.1, may be limited to three minutes each, are there comments at this time? Seeing none, sir, may the floor be closed?
Please.
Move it.
Second.
Got you.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you for staying.